Regular meeting of the 34th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Kadekell.
Here.
Councilmember Plaidonsen.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Terbrak.
Here.
And Mayor Odweire.
Here.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I'd like to move to approve tonight's agenda removing Resolution Number R-2812 and adding as number 11 on our regular agenda the matter of approving, motion M-4612, the matter of approving the proposed Berkeley Farmers Market Manager Contract with Nicolai Event Communications.
Very good. Is there support for the changed agenda?
Support.
Support. The motion has been made by Councilmember Kadekell with support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
The agenda has been approved. And now I see here Majid Steve Kepler is with us. We will stand for the invocation.
[Inaudible] Father in Heaven, you guide us toward peace in life, in joy, and in unity. You send your blessing to our work and help us find the grace, kindness, and compassion to take on the sacred task of making our city work. Blessed be the Holy One who has given us life, has strengthened us, and has brought us all to this day in health and in hope. And we say together, Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on the agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it's being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name's Joel Wolferts. I reside in Berkeley. You may recall I was here previously with questions about the level of service that I can expect. I've since solicited responses from City Hall and DPW. To summarize their responses, both the code enforcement officer and the Director of DPW were unable to supply timing for basic items that they should have budget for. Both, however, cited budget constraints and said they wouldn't, or said they would add complaints to a list. My concern is that they should have a list and be telling me what is on the list already, its priority, and when they'll get to it. I understand, you know, we've cut these services for some time, and that at current revenue levels, there may be additional cuts to code enforcement, tree trimming, street repairs. But these services have already been cut to the bone, and any additional cuts to these services are going to pose a significant safety issue, in my opinion. I've personally suffered thousands of dollars of damages because of the lack of services in these areas. And I'd like to think that code enforcement specifically could pay for itself. I've got some other ideas regarding, you know, not only saving money but increasing revenue. I know that a 1% pay cut across the board, you know, is going to be tough and unpopular. But like I said, I've got other ideas, and prior to next week's town hall, I'd like to get David to supply me a breakdown for City Hall's office supplies expenses, their telephone service expenses, and building maintenance expenses for public safety and the library. These expenses appear to be excessive, in my opinion, and in light of the need for roof repairs, I'm not sure why we're spending $50,000 on building maintenance. That would be all.
Thank you.
Cindy Kuhn, 2772 Cummings. I would just like to take this opportunity to invite all of you. We are having a Christmas in July fundraiser for our Berkeley Holiday Parade, and that will be held this Monday coming up on July 23rd. And again, Bob, at 24 seconds, is being gracious enough to, between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m., all of the proceeds, like 20% of the proceeds, will go to the Holiday Parade Committee. So I'd like to invite everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, then we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the Consent Agenda for tonight?
Yes. Item number one, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the 34th City Council on Monday, June 18th, 2012, and the special meeting on June 26th, 2012. Item number two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1256. Number three, ordinance number O-3-12, matter of adopting an amendment to the Berkeley City Code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1 through 7(c) and Chapter 122, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 122 through 61 through 122 through 63.5, to adopt MCL 257.6251(c) by specific reference, and to readapt the Michigan Vehicle Code by reference, the High BAC Super drunk ordinance, second reading. And item number four would be Resolution Number R-2912, matter of recognizing Sandy Rewald for her service to the Berkeley Public Library Board.
Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Terbrak with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes.
And now we come to the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and Presentations, matter of any recognition or presentations from the Consent Agenda.
I have asked Councilmember Stedman to read Resolution 2912.
This is a resolution of the City, uh, Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Sandy Rewald for her service to the Berkeley Public Library Board. Whereas Sandy Rewald began serving on the Berkeley Public Library Board in 1992, and whereas Sandy Rewald has served on the Board for 20 years, and during this tenure served in capacity as Secretary to the Berkeley Public Library Board. And whereas Sandy was active in all aspects of phases of the Berkeley Public Library Building Project, from the successful passage of the bond through building design, and whereas as a valued community volunteer, Sandy dedicated many hours helping to move the library from our temporary location and back to the renovated building, including unpacking boxes and re-shelving books. And whereas Sandy is also active in the Friends of the Library and is currently serving as Secretary and Program Chair for this group, and she plans to continue to be an active member of the Friends of the Library. And whereas upon her retirement from the Berkeley Public Library Board, Sandy Rewald is looking forward to having more time to travel with her husband, Gary Gallopin, and visiting her children, Christopher, Courtney, and Leah. Therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves that the City Council does hereby recognize and thanks Sandy Rewald for her dedicated commitment to the Berkeley Public Library Board, and her many years of outstanding service to the community and to residents of the City of Berkeley, introduced and passed at a regular council meeting on Monday, July 16th, 2012, signed by Mayor Phil Odweire.
Thank you.
Want to come up? Thank you, Sandy. Thank you. Oh, yes, yes. Oh. All of us. Oh, yes. Oh, so much. Thanks. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It's unnecessary, but much appreciated, and it was a good 20 years. I didn't even realize how long it was until you just told me that. But I miss everybody else on the Library Board, so thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Resolution Number R-30-12, matter of authorizing First Data Merchandise Services to provide wireless, over-the-counter, and Internet debit credit card transaction processing for the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 3012?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekell with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. DeSessa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. On this item, there's a lot to review, so let me begin by simply stating that how this all came to be. I know that for a while now, and I'm looking at them as I'm speaking, my colleagues, we were responsible for putting together the Cruise Fest. All of the groups worked very hard in order to sell the merchandise and to be able to do their best to make sure that we get, we sell it all. And for many years, I know that they've been asking us to look into this, into this matter, to see if indeed this is something that was feasible. And after much hounding from the chair of the committee, we finally were able to come up with something. I'd like to also thank our bank, who are, they're here today, Kim Gothe? Kim Gothee?
I'll raise them.
Okay. And they got that all together. But before, like I said, there's a lot to explain before I talk to Flagstar and have them explain how this is all going to work. But our Finance Director, Mr. David Sabuda, together with our Director of Parks and Recreation, were able to work together and come up with a plan of action. And with that, what I'd like to do is just simply ask Mr. Sabuda, our Finance Director, to explain exactly what the services are going to be, how it's going to work, in very summary format, Mr. Sabuda. And then, and then thank Ms. Gothee, because I know that she worked very hard to get such an outstanding proposal for the City of Berkeley. I know we've talked, I've talked to members of the, of our committee as well, and they were very pleased with this proposal. So with that, and of course, if they'd like to say anything as well, they're able, they're more than happy to come up and say something. But at this time, Mr. Sabuda, could you just please give a summary of how this is going to work?
Thank you, Mrs. DeSessa. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Mayor? Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me?
Mr. Mayor?
That would be Mr. Mayor.
Mr. I'm sorry. Very sorry. I apologize.
Old habits die easily compared to today.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, good evening.
Yeah, I did it once.
All right. You have, we, what we're going to do tonight is talk a little bit about credit card transactions. And there are two phases to this. The first phase is wireless transactions that Mrs. DeSessa alluded to earlier. Basically, what we're going to do is rent four machines, which will be provided by First Data, if approved tonight by the Council. Those machines will be used in the field. It's a seasonal contract. Basically, what they will do is allow for those types of debit and credit card transactions in the field. We think that basically we will have approximately $400, I'm sorry, 220, about 260, 275 in flat charges, and then transaction charges of basically around $1.16 if it's a credit card, or above 50, 58 cents if it's a debit card, depending on the transaction, the dollar value that's being applied. That's Phase One. And First Data is going to come in and train. They'll put the machines into play, and then we will account for the transactions as they occur. The good news is, is everything will be encrypted, and also the dollars will go directly into the city's account. So that's the first phase. The second phase would be this, is currently right now, we provide debit and credit card transactions at the Recreation Department. And we, finding out that First Data was the largest supplier in the United States of credit card services, they were the preferred provider of Flagstar Bank, we decided to take it a step further and do a cost analysis to determine whether First Data could save us some money at the Recreation Department. We found out that they could, approximately $117 a month on various transactions. So we're looking at approximately a 25% savings in credit card transaction costs. So at the end of the day, what ends up happening is we're proposing that we replace our current credit card provider, which used to be the preferred provider by Flagstar, which has since left, bringing in First Data to also cover the Recreation Department on a daily basis, including Internet transactions and over-the-counter transactions for the city. So you're really seeing two things here. Number one, the wireless machines for Dream Cruise on a seasonal basis, and then on a day-in, day-out basis, credit card transaction processing with First Data at the Recreation Department. And I also like to point out at the Recreation Department, nothing will change. The security will stay in place, we'll still maintain our security compliance, and we'll be able to complete transactions in a, just as efficient manner as we had in the past. I'll be happy to, Kim Gothee's here from Flagstar Bank, will be happy to entertain any questions the Council may have. And I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Flagstar representative? We certainly continue to enjoy a wonderful relationship with Flagstar.
As we do. We really appreciate the city's support that we've had. I think it's been about six years, so we've been doing, having a really good relationship with you.
Thank Councilmembers.
It's not a question, but it's a comment. I want to thank you, and I want to thank our Chairman, Mr. Kuhn, who is here tonight too, for his persistence. As Ms. DeSessa said, he's been really persistent on this situation, and it should increase the value of our sales greatly during the pre-sales and during the Dream Cruise. So I want to thank everyone involved.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn, perhaps you would give us a thought about the importance of this for the work that you do?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Actually, it's several reasons, and first is, is that when we, when we met with our, with our supplier for the t-shirts and merchandise, he said that they had seen, and I think I had told you guys this before, they had seen increase in sales of about $200 to $400 a day on that. And, and for us, what, what my thing is, is that, is that we need to get rid of all the merchandise, because if we don't get rid of all the merchandise, we haven't made as much money as we can possibly make for the city and for the groups that run the booths. And if we, if we have to have a liquidation sale on Sunday, we're discounting the merchandise, which means we're not making all the money that we can make for the city and for the booths. And the thing is, is that, is that it's, it's statistically proven, and studies have proven, that people with cards will spend more money typically, because they aren't separating themselves with their cash, they're just giving a card. And, and that's, that's the fact. And the thing is, is that we saw people last year leave our booth and go across the street to Shrine, who is selling, is our competition, and they went there because they had machines so that they could make the transactions. The other thing is, is that it's a little bit more subtle, and that is, is that we do pre-sales from the Friday before up until the event, and there's, you know, God bless them, there's, there's a lot of ladies up there that work, but they have a lot of cash, and we try and get rid of the cash as fast as we can. This will cut back on some of that, which is good, because then it doesn't leave them vulnerable to, you know, something. So that, that was the reason for a lot of it, and see, Jane, even all of my nagging, I've saved you money in the long run.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll expect the card in the mail. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Ms. DeSessa.
Council, I, 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 thank you very much. I appreciate, I appreciate it. But I, but I would like to say that, I'd like to thank Flagstar for their persistence in doing this. I know it took a while, it took us a little while, but, but Ms. Gothee was very adamant of getting the right card, or the right system for us, so that it's safe for the people that use it, give us a price in which we can save, because these are expensive things. And, and I want to thank Ms. Gothee, because she really worked hard on this, and, and if it hadn't been for her, believe me, there are much higher rates out there, and that's one of the reasons our Finance Director was not very happy in the beginning with this, because it, it is the convenience, but there, there is an expense as well, and we wanted it to be as fair as it possibly could be, and as low as it possibly could be as well too. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on Resolution 3012?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrak?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Closed session, matter of recessing into a closed session to discuss pending litigation.
Is there a motion to move to closed session?
Move to approve to go into closed session.
Moved by Councilmember Kadekell.
Support.
Support by Mayor Protem Terbrak. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Terbrak?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaidonsen?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Odweire?
Yes. Before we go, Ms. DeSessa, how long will we be out, for the sake of the media that are here and the audience?
I would, I would say 10, 15 minutes at the most.
15 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekko?
Here.
Plaid Onson?
Here.
Stedman?
Here.
Turbrack?
Here.
Blanchard?
Here.
O'Dwyer?
Here.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on that one?
Mm-hmm. Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 3112, matter of accepting a gift from DTE Energy for the Berkeley Cruise Fest.
Is there a motion to approve R. 3112?
Move to approve R. 3112.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Kadekko with support by Councilmember Plaid Onson. Ms. DeSessa.
Mr. Mayor, it gives me great pride and joy to address you with regards to this item. You know, things are tough everywhere. And I couldn't have said that this would have been a better time. But thanks to Ms. Denise Allard and DTE, they are able to come together and donate, for lack of a better word, to the city of Berkeley, a total of $25,000 for the funding of the Cruise Fest. And this is a tremendous gift. And I wanted to bring this to the council's attention, and not yet. As much as I wanted. But I wanted to thank her, and I wanted the city council to accept this gift and to let the public know what this is going to be used for. And this is primarily to help us pay for all the things that are done for the Cruise Fest. Overtime for public safety and just paying for public safety officer's time, to pay for whatever the basic needs are for the Cruise Fest. And I know that Mark Coon, the chair, as well, Mark, if you don't mind, joining us as well, as the chairman, and helping us to, if the council approves, accept this wonderful gift. Ms. Denise Allard is here with us. She's also a member of our committee. Thank you very much for your time. Ms. Allard, I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to say anything. And then lastly, council, I suppose, you know, with this gift, we also have some responsibilities between the two of us in order to help promote DTE. But they are doing so many wonderful things. I will let her explain. All we're doing primarily is putting up banners and signs for them. But this event is going to be a little different than the past. And I'll let Ms. Allard go into a little bit more detail as to what's happening there. So with that, I'll turn it over to her, or if Mr. Coon wishes to say anything before she begins, it'd be great.
Other than, we really appreciate it, this will go to pay, like you said, many, many, many things. I mean, from paying for barrels and barriers to paying for public works and public safety overtime and all of those types of things. I mean, this event is an expensive event. And we're always looking to try and make sure that we have money to cover the costs without burdening our residents, taxpayers here at the city. So this goes a long way to help do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, everybody. I'm a City of Berkeley resident, and I've been a resident for about 11 years now. And I just was sitting on my couch one day, and I thought that would be the perfect marriage of DTE and Berkeley. We really love the old cars, and, you know, many of our customers are enthusiasts, and many of our customers work with the auto industry. So what we're doing at DTE is we're trying to help these customers save energy. So this whole thing for us is about helping our customers save energy. And so we're going to have a booth, actually a pretty big space, at Griffith and 12 Mile to sign up Berkeley residents and others that attend to have free home energy consultations. So we'll actually be able to schedule them and go to their home and let them know where they can save and what they should do. And it's totally free. We'll have a drawing, an entry to give away a new Energy Star appliance valued up to $1,500. And the customer who wins will have a choice of what type of appliance they want to get. We're also going to promote our appliance recycling program, which we take old working refrigerators and we pay our customers $40 for them. We haul them away, whether they're in the basement or the garage or wherever they come from, and then we recycle 98 percent of them. We also have information on our audit and weatherization program to help customers, you know, get their homes' envelopes more efficient. And we have also rebates on high-efficient HVAC equipment that we want customers to know about in case they have to get a new air conditioner or something like right now, you know, especially when it's, you know, 100 degrees tomorrow. So we're very pleased to be able to do this with Berkeley. And we're just hoping that it's going to be a very big success as it already is, and hopefully it will be also a success for us. Oh, and we also have our Volt there. We have a couple of Volts, and so I'm bringing the Chevy Volt and somebody to actually explain all of the workings of an electric car and what it can do. I did check it out from work a few weeks ago and drove it around, and, gosh, I loved it. That thing was great. And that's really all I have to say, but thank you very much, and I hope that you do approve us to sponsor the parade for you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Allard? Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More of a comment. Having been on this committee for many years as a resident, now as a council liaison, I'm sure Chairman Coon can attest to this. We're sitting around wondering how are we going to pay for things? How much money are we going to have? And Ms. Allard, you and DTE have, as Ms. Coon said earlier about holiday parade, well, we're having holiday in July because of you, or in August, I should say. And I want to thank you for being there and for helping us out.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this topic? Well, I certainly, on behalf of the residents and the general community, thank you for your support of Cruise Fest. It makes an enormous difference that we have the money to put on a first-class parade of cars. One of the extraordinary things we learn about government is, we still can't take your $25,000 without a vote. It would be only government that would work that way. So, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll to allow us to take $25,000?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And, Mark, is it to you or to?
You to the mayor.
The mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And those checks are in. Two of this is in the appliance recycling program, and this is, actually, we paid for it, but they have to give it back to me.
It doesn't say Phil O'Dwyer.
Well, it does say Sidney O'Dwyer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And hopefully, everybody will come.
Oh, absolutely.
And we're going to have some big signs up on the cemetery with the, and some of the things that have the date and the time on them so that people, when they drive by, will know that, you know, who knows? Maybe we can increase the attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M. 4112, matter of approving the 2012 summer maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4112?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman or support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, this is an agreement that appears for you once a year. It's an annual agreement, and there's not a lot of change. But for that, I'd like to ask our DPW foreman to come in and please just briefly go over exactly what this is all about. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Good evening.
Evening.
Basically, this is an agreement between Oakland County Road Commission and the City of Berkeley. They pay us to do the summer maintenance, basically just street sweeping. They do all the cold patch, and they pay us to sweep the streets three times a year. They just don't have enough manpower to handle it, I guess.
Okay. Now, we're getting this check from the county, but that is an inadequate amount of money for the amount we do.
No, we do above and beyond that.
That's what I mean.
We sweep it just like we do it usually, every two weeks.
Correct. But this is suddenly a token from the county.
No.
Are there any questions for Mr. Young? Mr. Sessa?
Just, so for the viewing audience, in terms of information, what are we talking about in terms of dollars? The city has reimbursed in two separate installments. The first is for $796.80, where we get 65 percent of these dollars. And then again, in September, we get another installment, maybe, I'm sorry, the total installment is $796.80, looks like it. And we get 65 percent, which is $517 in September, and then 35 percent in October for about $278. So it's just a very small amount, but this helps us, to reimburse us for, as Mr. Young said, three sweeps per year. But obviously, we do a little bit more than that in order to keep things clean in our community and to help us maintain our streets and our sewers and things of that nature. Counsel, please note that there is no increase from last year. This is the same. We are seeing no major changes with this contract. The city attorney has reviewed it as well, and we are recommending it for your consideration.
Very good. Are there any questions? Discussion? Very good. Seeing none, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M. 4112?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R. 3212, matter of approving a contractor agreement with Robert North as Deputy Chief of Public Safety Department for the period of July 17, 2012 through July 16, 2013.
Is there a motion to approve R. 3212?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Mayor Protem Turbrack. Mr. Sessa?
Counsel, as you know, some of our, well, we don't have very many, but in this case, Mr. North is considered a contractual employee. And in order so that he can continue to work as such, the city council is required to pass this type of agreement and resolution. Again, it is something that we'd like to continue. There's been some changes to it. One change is a reduction in terms of salary. It has been reduced by about 5 percent. We also have some changes in terms of time. We did increase his leave times a little more than the past. And other than that, I believe that is it. I know that our city attorney has also worked very closely with Chief Ashman and Mr. North with regards to this agreement. So, Mr. Attorney, I don't know if you have anything else to say. Unfortunately, counsel, Chief Ashman could not be here today. He had to go address another issue. We had an emergency. But both he and I are recommending this agreement for your consideration.
Very good.
That is correct. Ms. Sessa pretty much nailed it right on the head. There's just some minor modifications compared to the last agreement that we had with Mr. North. I think we're all pleased that we're going to have him for at least another year. And like I said, I think she addressed all the changes that were made.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Sessa? No questions. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R. 3212?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M. 4212, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, Inc., to provide a traffic study for Coolidge Highway in the amount not to exceed $7,946.09.
Is there a motion to approve M. 4212?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Plaid Onson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa?
Counsel, I know that you have been looking to receive this contract for your consideration for a little while. We did finally go out to bid. I know also that the Downtown Development Authority is also looking to see what the results of this study as well. I know this is a very big question that people have. And just so that everybody knows what I'm talking about, I'd like to ask Ms. Vanson, our city planner, to again, very briefly explain the purpose of this study and the costs that are associated with this study. Thank you, Ms. Vanson.
Good evening. I'm so glad I'm here. It must be really tricky getting here today. In April, council appropriated community development block grant money from a master plan update to a traffic study. And it was a pretty small amount, as I'll review for folks watching. Community development block grant money is money that we get from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it has gone down from about $96,000 that we got in 1996 down to less than $40,000. We used to be able to spend 20 percent of that amount on planning projects, administration, that sort of thing. This will be This will be the last planning project, probably, I don't know if they'll ever reinstitute it, but we were given notice by Oakland County that effective after this year, no more planning projects. So, I think it's fitting, given all of the discussion about Coolidge Highway and all the theories about how many lanes and turn lanes and not turn lanes, and parking and not parking, that we really have an expert look at this. And so, as I said in my report, I sent proposals to our city engineer, Hubble, Roth, and Clark, and also to LSL Planning, who's done, did our master plan and update in 1997, and also has done some work for the Downtown Development Authority as well, and is very well respected. And they decided to team up together and gave us one proposal, and then another company, Opus International, which I am not familiar with, but had a very good proposal as well, submitted. And we advertised it in accordance with city policy and federal law. So we had two proposals. They were both very, very good, and I am recommending, and I spoke with Ms. Sessa about this, the one that is slightly more money. Hubble, Roth, and Clark and LSL Planning have prepared a proposal and are proposing something that's about $300 more than what we have in our community development block grant funds. We have, we do have money set aside for the Woodward 12-mile intersection. We would like to complete that, and I am looking at getting prices from Hubble, Roth, and Clark, and the contractor that's currently doing work at 12 and Coolidge, to see if we might be able to get some economies of scale and get that intersection completed with the landscaping and so forth. So we do have some money set aside, and I think that we can take $300 out of that project and move it to this one, because I think this is worthwhile. Given all of the opinions about Coolidge Highway, I think it, it would be good if we had professionals that were familiar with the city and all the different, the business interests, the DDA, planning, city council, public safety, public works. And I think Hubble, Roth, and Clark and LSL Planning are very familiar with all of those groups, and I think there wouldn't be a learning curve like there would with another consultant. But as I said, both proposals were very good, but I am recommending the one that's a little bit more money, simply because they have more small-city experience and because of their knowledge of the City of Berkeley in particular.
Very good. Are there any questions or discussion? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the timeline for completion on this study?
I think they said three months.
Three months.
A pretty quick turnaround. They have, some new numbers are coming up, so they'll be able to use those through SEMCOG in Oakland County as far as the churning data. And I was advised, otherwise, they would not have been able to do it for this very small amount.
Councilmember Stedman.
I assume they're not going to start the study until after the intersection is open?
Well, the number, they are not going to do more numbers. We wouldn't have been able to afford them to do more numbers with this. They're looking at existing numbers that Oakland County has already run prior to that happening. So, so they'll be accurate numbers.
Councilmember Plaid Onson.
Could you tell us a little bit about what a traffic study is, what kind of information we get back out of this?
Oh, I wish I had it right in front of me, but I was really running late. It was really hard to get here.
Yeah, I almost didn't make it myself.
I should've watched the news. Essentially, they're going to look at all of the existing data that's there, and they are going to look at, do we have the capacity currently with the four lanes? They're going to look at future capacity. What do they estimate traffic to be in the next 20 years? Do we have the capacity for that with the four lanes? And then they're going to look at, all right, if we have that, then what if we shrunk it? What would happen if we, if we went through and looked at three lanes, possibly? What would happen to the traffic at that point? So they're going to model it that way, and then depending upon how those numbers come up, I mean, if three lanes is just out of sight, crazy, jam-packed, then they'll look at, okay, well, can we do something with four lanes? So can we shrink the lanes? Can we make them narrower? They'll look at that. And so they're going to present, I believe, three alternatives, right off the top of my head, of what, of what could, you know, there's going to be one that's just keep it the same, and then there's going to be two other ones, depending upon how the numbers get crunched.
Okay.
And they'll present those. I think they, I had asked for more meetings than what they'll be able to do for this price, but I think, in hindsight, I think that'll be good. I think it'll be good to have, instead of having everybody talk together and seeing the same things and coming to one mind, I think that'll be good for the community.
Mr. Sessa.
Ms. Vanson, sorry for not, at least giving you a little bit of a heads-up on this item, but I did get a call from Councilman Baker.
Yes.
And one of the, one of the questions, he wanted to make sure that I addressed, was, are we going to, or is this study going to also include perhaps some of the other of our city groups, like the Environmental Committee or the, or the DDA? Will there be any time for input?
Oh, definitely. I had suggested six meetings, thinking of all of the various groups. They have proposed three meetings in order to keep the cost down. And so I think, as I was reviewing the proposals, I was sort of, I was trying to think of at what point we would want to have the various groups together. But yes, as, as all of our meetings are open, they're going to be open meetings, and it's just a matter of who's hosting, and, and certainly, everybody will get invited.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the council? Anybody from the audience?
Hi, Alan.
I'm Alan Simonean, Chair of the DDA. We've had a lot of interest from our Coolidge business merchants to do some kind of traffic study. There's, there's a lot of interest in reducing the number of lanes by the merchants, thinking that people will slow down and be shopping more on Coolidge. And ultimately, I have said as the Chair is that, you know, we are interested in looking at that and to make sure that it's safe, that it's viable, that it wouldn't constrict our traffic. And so, as a representative of the DDA, I applaud the city's efforts to do a traffic study for the Coolidge on behalf of the, of the merchants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simonean. Anything else before we vote? Then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-4212?
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M-4312, matter of approving the applications by the Berkeley American Legion Post 374, Blarney Stone Pub, O'Mearas, and Forgotten Harvest Westborne for temporary authorization of outdoor alcohol sales, subject to the approval of the Liquor Control Commission in their applied-for extended areas.
Is there a motion to approve M-4312?
Move to approve M-4312.
Support?
Support.
A move by Councilmember Kadek, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, for, I guess, just consistency purposes, again, these, these items come before you as they have every single year. There hasn't been really some major changes, but I will go briefly over each of these permit requests, just for the public to let them, you know, give them a little bit of information in terms of what they're doing. But I do know that these groups, having, working together, have worked with our city planner to make sure that they're in compliance, and then also with our Public Safety Director, Chief Ashman, as well. And they both concur that they're, that they do recommend these permits for your consideration. So, let's start with the American Legion permit. They're looking for Friday, August 17, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Saturday, August 18, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Again, there is not much change here. They're just simply requesting a temporary license to sell alcohol outdoors to, to non-members. Again, we, we don't anticipate any problems, and we are recommending this permit for your consideration. Next is the Blarney Stone Pub, a temporary use permit. They're looking to have this event on two days as well. August 17, Friday, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then on Saturday, August 18, from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The North Parking Lot will have a beer tent. This is a plan that's very similar to the one that has been approved for the past several years, and to the best of our knowledge, we're not aware of us having any major issues with regards to this event. Obviously, if there are, public safety will be there to address any concerns that are brought forth by our residents. Then, next is O'Mearas. They're only looking for one day, and that's for Friday, August 17, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Again, they're moving their handicap parking spaces to another area of their parking lot. O'Meara has expanded this service several times for the last 15 years. Again, the city has had no problem during or following this event, and we are recommending it. And then lastly, is the, is Westborne Market. They're asking a permit for the, for their Forgotten Harvest event that they have there on an annual basis, and they're looking to have this event on Friday, August 17, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. At that site, there are some proposed activities that they've done every year, and they'll have some music, some dancing, champagne and wine bar, some food services. All activities will take place in a tent, and it is, this tent is located in their parking lot. Again, we have had no major problems with this, with this event, and we are recommending it for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sessa? Any discussion of this topic? This comes before us every year, almost identical each year. If there are no questions, then, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-4312?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-4412, matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for certain individuals to serve as trustees of the Michigan Municipal Workers' Compensation Fund and direct the city clerk to send the marked ballot.
Is there a motion to approve M-4412?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Kadek. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, this comes before you. This is required. We are members of the Michigan Municipal League's Workers' Compensation Fund. In order for us to have our vote counted, the, they are asking for us to vote for these individuals. We're voting for five trustees, two terms beginning October 1, 2012. And these individuals are as follows. Mr. George Bosonic, he is an incumbent. He is the manager for the City of Greenville. Christine Burns, she's also an incumbent. She's the manager for the Village of Spring Lake. Ken Hebel, he's also an incumbent, and he's the manager for the City of Clare. Eva Mills, also an incumbent, she's the president for the Village of Lexington. And Mr. James Reinberg, an incumbent mayor for the City of Fremont. And in this case, Your Honor, we just simply need you to, to vote.
Very good. Seeing no questions or discussion, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-4412?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now, Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 10?
Motion number M-4512, matter of authorizing the city manager in the Historical Committee to enter into an agreement with Arcadia Publishing for the publication of a book entitled Berkeley, Michigan. Furthermore, the proceeds from the sale of this publication be deposited in a general fund account for the purpose of supporting the Historical Committee's mission to preserve and promote the history of the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M-4512?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Terbrack.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, I really don't have too much to say on this item, believe it or not, except the fact that I know Mr. Richardson is here from the Historical Committee. This is just really the beginning. This Arcadia book, I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. You'll see them, or you'll find them, in, in bookstores and things like that, where they will showcase a community, and they give a little history of, of the city. But the Historical Committee has, has been working very, very hard to, to come together with a more formal or hardback copy of, of the history of Berkeley. This, like I said, this is just the beginning. This is a start. And when they were approached to do this, they, they, they felt that this was important and that this would help them to raise some dollars in order to, to help the Historical, Historical Committee do things that they've been working on for so long, not just the book, but perhaps maybe do a few other things, you know, again, depending on, on how much money is brought in by this work. But at this time, I'd like to recognize the three individuals that are responsible for doing this, and this includes committee members Sue Richardson, Jeff Tong, and Councilmember Steve Baker. And I know they're both here this evening with us, and maybe perhaps say a little comment. Mr. Tong? And, and thank you both so much for, for doing this, and for Councilman Baker. I know that he is a, he is a great supporter of the history, and he has done a tremendous job with the Historical Committee. So with that, Ms. Richardson, if you don't mind, maybe explaining a little bit more in terms of what you all are doing? Really, I would appreciate it. Thank you, and welcome.
Well, this is an example, in case you haven't seen it, of the, the kind of books that Arcadia does on various cities, and they've done several in this area. This is Claussen. They've done Royal Oak. So what we've been doing is gathering photos. A lot of them are in the Historical Museum already, in various files, so we've been gathering them. We've also been fortunate to get photos from the Walter Reuther collection, and various churches have been very generous, donating photos that we would scan and return to them. We've been writing up the captions. The, the way these books work, they're, they're extensive captions with some narrative. So we're anticipating having close to 200 photos, and as Jane said, that this, we hope, will be the precursor to something even more elaborate. So, but we're very excited to be able to do this, and we're just so pleased that Arcadia accepted our proposal, which we worked very hard.
Yes.
Dr. Richardson, when do you think that this would be published?
Well, we're hoping to turn it over to Arcadia in the fall, and it takes them about six months to produce it. So we, our dream is to have it ready for Berkeley Day, so.
Very good. Are there any questions or discussion on this topic? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say thank you for the work you've done. Just in the application, there was a ton of work that was generated, and you did a wonderful job, and I was, I was really impressed when I read it. So you've gone a long way already, and we thank you for what you've done. It's, it's a great effort so far.
Yeah, this really is a collaborative effort. Jeff, Steve, and I have been working very closely on this, and we seem to mesh. It's, you know, it worked out well, the three of us deciding to go into this.
Very good. Well, we're certainly thankful that you are preserving the history of our community. I think it's a very important thing to remember where we came from. It helps us to know where we're going.
Yeah, we've uncovered some fascinating things, just getting into this, that I think people will be very intrigued by, very surprised at some of the findings.
So this could be the catalyst, then, for the larger publication?
Yes, that is, that is our hope.
Because a substantial amount of research is already assembled?
Correct.
And that would be the next, the next phase?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Any other thoughts?
Very good.
Well, thank you both. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Sue.
Oh, and if anybody has photos that they think would be useful, we would love to have them. What we do is scan them and then return the originals. So we're very hopeful that more people will come forth with, you know, digging through their attics and their basements, and their relatives' scrapbooks, and anything that they think might be useful. We'd love to have them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Ms. Sessa.
One more thing, Your Honor. After this is completed and the book has been put together and so forth, I know that we hope to sell it at the bookstores as well.
Yes.
But it will also be available here at City Hall and our library so that our residents can, you know, have quick access to it. So we're hoping everybody will support us, and we'll sell a ton of those books. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll then on M-4512?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Clyde Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Odweare?
Yes. And now, Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on, read number 11?
Motion number M-4612, matter of approving the Berkeley Farmers Market Manager's Contract.
Is there a motion to approve M-4612?
Move to approve M-4612.
Moved by Councilmember Kadekko.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Sessa.
Counsel, last month, the DDA approved, for your counsel's consideration, this proposal to take a look at the farmers' market. I know that it is a project that the Downtown Villain Authority is very anxious to get started, and with that, they came up with a proposal, and they are recommending, Ms. Nicolai, to assist us with this endeavor. She is with us here this evening, and with that, I know that the chair of our DDA is here with us as well. Please join us and help me answer any questions that the council may have with regards to this issue. Ms. Nicolai, could you just please give us a brief summary in terms of what it is that we're doing and we hope to bring to the city of Berkeley?
Okay. As this proposal states, it is initially to do all the necessary research and planning to make sure when we do bring a market in 2013 that it's sustainable, that we have the right kinds of vendors for our city to bring forward extra people in addition to the downtown area. In addition, so it's for the, to do a lot of the pre-planning for 2013 for a consistent market on a weekly basis. And then, in addition, there is a, what would be a test event, or at least to have some kind of an event, the DDA really wanted some type of event this year that had vendors coming in, and so that would happen in the fall of 2012. Actually, we would be looking at this point sometime in October, mid-October, 13th or 14th, or the 20th or 21st. The harvest-type event in the fall, this fall, would be more on a weekend. I know really for the actual farmers' market, what we would be looking in 2013 is we'd probably be looking more at a weekday, but it's really figuring out what would be the best weekday because there's other farmers' markets within the community, other communities, how we could work with other communities, per se, that might be a possibility, in addition to marketing each other's markets, and in addition, how we can work, more importantly, within the DDA area and the businesses in the DDA area to bring more people downtown. And with that, I think.
Ellen also has one.
Well, I just wanted to add that the farmers' market is something that has been an issue that the DDA has wanted to do for a very long time, and at the same time, I can speak, wearing my other hat, that the Berkeley Chamber has been very excited about having a farmers' market in Berkeley. Our neighboring communities, Lathir Village, Southfield, Royal Oak, Birmingham, all have farmers' markets. They do not compete with each other. They are on different dates because of days of the week because it's some of the same farmers, and they can't be in two places at once. I have spoken to people that have been involved in the farmers' markets in our neighboring communities and have only heard positive feedback. With that, our thought is that by doing a test market this fall, we could solicit feedback from the community and the businesses to see what works here, what doesn't work here, and to make sure that it's a win-win for both the community and the residents, as well as the merchants. And so I would address any concerns that anyone may have regarding moving forward with this farmers' market, but I would ask that you give us a chance to pilot it this year because we'll have to come back to you next year to get approval anyway. And so you'll have plenty of chances to give us feedback, both in your voting and also in your opinions after we do this event this fall.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seems like a wise thing to pilot something and see how it would work, and then study it and see what changes we might want to make going into the next year. Are we, are there any questions? So it seems like everybody is ready to vote, then?
Yes.
Very good.
Very good.
Great enthusiasm. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on M-4612?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Clyde Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Odweare?
Yes. Very good.
Try to step up the enthusiasm down here.
Ms. Prince, would you please read item number 12 on tonight's agenda?
Council Work Session, matter of discussing a proposed fireworks ordinance.
Work session. Ms. Sessa.
Okay, Your Honor. I know this is something that has been brought forth to us by our city attorney, Mr. Dale Schneider. I know that the firework, there was a major change in the beginning of this year for fireworks, the way they can be used, and I know that our city attorney has expressed some concerns, and I think members of the city council as well have expressed some concerns. I know that our neighboring communities as well are looking at making some changes to their own individual ordinances. Now, a few weeks ago, I sent you a package that was put together by our city attorney. In the package, it includes a copy of the law that was passed in early January, and then also samples of other ordinances that were passed in other communities. And the reason we wanted you to take a look at that was to see if there was anything specific that you wanted us to address in the preparation or modification of our ordinances. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and if the city attorney would like to add anything else, I'd be happy to turn it over to him. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. No, I think Jane had, she explained it pretty well, just kind of trying to feel the council out, trying to find out how you want us to address it. I think most of the communities are trying to address all of the other days that are not national holidays. I think you all understand that under the state law, it basically states that we cannot touch that, those days, at least not with our fireworks ordinance. I like to basically prohibit it every day other than those national holidays that is allowed by the state law. There's other things, I think some people understand, that even on July 4th, they're doing it at midnight or 1:00. I did have an opportunity to talk to the chief about it. I think there's some other avenues that can be addressed instead of a fireworks ordinance, a disturbing-the-peace, a noise ordinance, maybe a nuisance, or even littering if somebody's projectiles goes on somebody else's property. So I think, to a point, some of that is already addressed, but at least for this point, because I don't know about, well, I know everyone else, we've heard fireworks go off on the non-national holidays, and I think it should be addressed.
Thank you. I've had a number of people send me emails regarding the past Fourth of July celebrations and concern for people who have to sleep and be up early in the morning and.
Or who have young kids.
Or who have little children, and even animals that get afraid of the firecrackers and so on. Now, the context of this is the law that the state passed.
Correct.
And unlike some of the laws they pass, they have discovered that this one has been a mistake. They don't seem to see the mistake in the other ones. But, well, not all of them. No, but it is on the review.
In fact.
In the State House.
They did pass something beginning of June.
Yes, it was.
I think it addressed more of the sale of the fireworks. There were some amendments dealing with some of the usage, but that dealt more with when it harmed somebody, and it beefed those aspects up. But I'd say probably 80% of the amendment to the new law dealt with more of the sale of those. And understand that the sale still has to comply with, you know, our city ordinance, our zoning ordinances.
Right.
And things along those lines. In addition, they still have to have the proper approval from the state of Michigan and the proper insurance and other certificates that are still required by the state.
So you're suggesting that we should still consider an ordinance?
Yes, at least regarding the non-national holidays, at least at this point. You know, this is such, still such a new law. I never like to be the forging ahead because, truthfully, I don't want to leave the city open for any type of lawsuit. I think that's going to shake out probably in the next several months, maybe even a year or so. We can always come back to amend it, but for now, we're going to be addressing probably the other 335, 340 days a year to make sure that it is going to be stopped.
I know that the South Oakland Mayor's Association is putting together a letter, and they're hoping that all of the communities will sign to ask the state to revisit this law in a more circumspect way, taking into consideration the needs of local communities. Ms. Sessa?
Counsel, one other thing that, and I know I just reviewed this myself with regard to this new bill that's going on. It's called Senate Bill 193, and in addition to the sale, one other item that's also addressed in here is that it addresses violation issues, what happens if someone violates, and there are some stiff penalties that are placed on that as well.
Lifetime banning to year, one year, two years, three years? Yeah.
So it's got some.
I said it beefed it up.
Yeah, that's right. It's very, very strong. I will make sure that I'll share this with the city council. So yeah, it's got some, if you violate this law, there are some serious penalties, and that's also in addition, that's new to, that they'd like to see changed.
The monetary penalties, I think it was $10,000, $20,000, and $40,000 for subsequent violations. Heavy chunk of change.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Turbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that not too long ago, we found ourselves in a very similar situation with a law that was passed by the state and not a complete law, I guess. There were a lot of holes and a lot of things that many cities, villages, and townships had to try to figure out how to deal with on their own, and it seems like we're in that exact same situation again, although it seems like, as the mayor mentioned, they may have gotten the message a little sooner on this particular item. We resolved that item, at least in the city, by an ordinance, by creating an ordinance that got the desired effect of what we want our community to be like. I've gotten phone calls, or actually not phone calls, but I've gotten emails, people on the street, you know, talking to me, residents, person that lives in my house, complaining about the same thing, and the fireworks that are going off at 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, going off on, was yesterday a holiday? No? Okay. Going off all different days.
It was my daughter's birthday.
Well, maybe that was you.
Not a national holiday.
That must have been you. But it has gotten, it seems that it's gotten a bit excessive, and after you sent us the information, it does seem like just about every city, at least our neighbors, are all doing the same thing, trying to figure out how to approach this, what's the best way for the city. Certainly, we don't want to leave ourselves open to any liability, but at the same time, we have to look at the type of neighborhood that we want to maintain and what we want to preserve in our communities. So I certainly think that we need to, at least my opinion, look into an ordinance, whether it is, you know, certainly addressing all of the other days other than the holidays, but I think, you know, putting a noise ordinance, for example, is an avenue to look at as well because, now, even on national holidays, so that's from midnight to midnight that day so we can go 1:00, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 AM, and it happened this year. I just think for our residents, at least the ones that have spoken to me, which has been many, I'm certainly in favor of that avenue.
Very good. Ms. Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, have been receiving complaints and concerns from neighbors and other residents of this, no pun intended, explosive situation. I've been looking, I've been studying, and I saw where, for example, in Sterling Heights, they prohibit fireworks from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM in residential areas, and the people only be able to set off the fireworks 30 times a year, and one for each of the 10 national holidays and the day before and the day after. Also, in doing some homework, I saw that in July, on July 11th, there was an article in the paper regarding what the state legislatures are doing, and Representative Harold Huff from Roseville, who happened to author the original bill, is now reconsidering the sale of fireworks from tents and consider providing funding for local municipalities to help with enforcement. What he wants to focus on is the review from a consumer usage standpoint and enforcement local municipalities put in place. And tomorrow, July 17th, they're meeting with the Fire Marshal to give their recommendations to Governor Schneider's office. So it's been mentioned a little bit, but they're really working hard in Lansing as we speak, and tomorrow, hopefully, something good will come out of it.
Yeah, I wanted to definitely thank Councilperson Kadekko with regards to Sterling Heights ordinance. I did have the opportunity to look at that, and I think there might be some other things that are in that ordinance that we may want to consider. I liked it about not being too close to property lines, the things along those lines. I think the council's correct, especially the mayor, when you stated that I don't think the legislature really understood what they were doing, especially not with a lot of our communities. I mean, our communities, we have houses 20 feet from each other, 30 feet from each other. That's not out in the country where you're not going to do nearly as much damage over a lake, you know, where, if anything, those things should be happening. In these crowded communities, I mean, you've already heard of, you know, things that have happened to people's detriment and people's property. I just don't think it's a good idea, unfortunately, especially in this type of community. It's just too much, it's too dangerous. And unfortunately, until they change the state law, we're not going to be able to address those 30 days.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everybody's comments. I also think that we need to look a little more at Sterling Heights. They've got some good things about where they can be set off, as such as on your own property only, not in the public roadway, not on a public sidewalk, and not within 50 feet of a dwelling and things like that, because I'm looking at it from a public safety standpoint where we can get some buildings on fire, we have to be very careful because we don't want our public safety having to respond to grass fires and building fires because of the fireworks. So I think Sterling Heights has some really good ideas in here. I think we should incorporate what we can out of that, along with the timelines.
And I think people should understand that they are responsible if they're lighting fireworks off, even on those national holidays, the day before, the day of, and the day after. If the fireworks that they are shooting off causes damage to somebody else's property, they are going to be held liable, and that can cost a lot of money.
Yes. And of course, because of the law, the fireworks that are now allowed are much more powerful.
Yes.
Than in former years, which increases the danger to residents and property.
Now they leave the ground. In the past, it was always just sparklers or little shooting fountains.
Yeah.
But now they have bottle rockets, they have these mortars, and all these other things that everyone hears, you know, very loudly in the middle of the night.
Well, you saw what happened in San Diego. Their 20-minute fire display ended in 20 seconds. Everything exploded.
And those are professionals.
And that's right. Councilmember Clyde Onson?
A question, actually. Is there anything we can do to address some of the larger-size fireworks that are being set off? I'd love the idea of looking at some of those things within the Sterling Heights ordinance. I have had, and many of my neighbors have experienced, one of our neighbors setting fireworks, shooting them off in the street at our houses. There's a house nearby that shoots them into the air for at least two or three weeks, and they're major, major fireworks coming out of tiny, tiny yards with cars parked nearby and houses parked nearby. Can we look at, can we do anything legally to address the size of the fireworks and as well as some of those restrictions, or is that not possible?
To a point, I think the state law already addresses some of the size requirements because they have basically levels already. They have the ones, the low-impact, the ones that have always been legal. Then you have the next level, the ones that basically open the can of worms, and then you have the big, real big ones where the professionals are doing it. I don't really believe there's our ability to really say, you can only have a small bottle rocket compared to a big bottle rocket. As long as it doesn't exceed or go to the next level of where the professionals are using, at least all the ordinances that I've seen and reading the state law and listening to all the other municipal attorneys, I have not seen anybody touch that aspect of it yet.
So we can't address anything about the ones that leave the ground?
No. I don't think I would be comfortable presenting that to the council, at least not at this time. You know, in six months or a year, they may have a new law, which I think is probably more probable than not.
But we can address some of those things by addressing some of those issues that Sterling Heights has in terms of distance from property, et cetera, et cetera?
I'm going to look into that a lot more. I'm going to look into that a, a lot more, you know, because you're still dealing with the state law. If we do something that is contrary to the state law, we're leaving ourselves open. I know the attorneys for Sterling Heights, I know them very, very well, and I have discussed a few things with them, but some of those things, I think, are more of a test for them, and they're, they are going to, they are expecting litigation. I know some other municipal attorneys in other towns that are, you know, if anything, pushing that envelope. I'd rather not push the envelope with our city, I'd rather kind of see how some of those things pan out. You know, at least for now, I want to limit it for the other days, and I will still look into, you know, some of those other aspects. I think they're, they're great, because, you know, I don't think a lot of these fireworks are designed to be done in a community like Berkeley, just because everything is so close.
Well, then, if I were to summarize, the consensus of the council seems to be that we need to do something here, and the advice to administration is to look at what they're doing in Tlason and Sterling Heights and a variety of other communities, and put something together for a future council meeting that we might take a look at and respond to this situation, because we must respond to this. We are getting too many calls, too many people are distressed by this in our community, and the danger is real.
Correct.
And then the, the temperature is outside, you know, every place is tender, dry, and a fire can happen like a flash. So that's the sense I'm hearing, that we want to move in that direction.
At least for now, I would like to bring the basic ordinance to the council, and I will look into addressing some of the things that the council had mentioned. And like I said, you know, when things play out, we may, I may come back with some amendments, you know, to the council.
Very good. Now, a second item is the South Oakland Mayor's Association. Is there a sense that what we're saying here is what they're saying? Should we also sign our consent to support their effort at expressing the same thing?
What is their?
Their effort is the same thing, asking the state and the governor to look into this and, and deal with this law. All of the, all of the, the South Oakland communities are, are doing this.
There's a, there's a letter that they're preparing, and they're going to send it back to us, all of us, to take a look at and review. Obviously, I'll, I'll ask our city attorney to take a look at it before we sign it, and of course, it's with the consensus of the city council as well.
That's right. And that's what we're asking, because the themes are similar to what we are expressing here.
I would love to be able to do something that, that Sterling Heights has outlined and feel comfortable about it. Some of those things that, that are in there, I don't feel 100% comfortable.
That are in?
That are in the Sterling Heights. Like I said, I think, you know, they're, they're pushing the envelope on, you know, some of the issues. It would be great if, if some of the items that were in the Sterling Heights ordinance were placed in, in the state law. Not shooting off, well, you, you can only do it on your own property, basically, anyway, but not within a certain distance from houses, because in our type of community, almost every house is within 50 feet of somebody else's.
Very good. Mr. Sessa.
Counsel, just so you know also, I won't bring this item to you in terms of for a first reading right, right away. What I'd like to do is, again, bring it to you as a work session item one more time, and let's take a look at it, and, and we'll move from there. So before I move it, bring it final, at least for first reading, I'd like for the city council to have one more work session on this.
Very good.
Is that okay? All right.
Very good. Well, thank you all for your contributions to that important topic. Now we come to communications. Ms. Prince, who should be first?
That would be Councilmember Kadeckel.
Councilmember Kadeckel, you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. First, I'm going to start on a sad note. Last year, we were honored to have Staff Sergeant Matthew Leach as our grand marshal during the cruise fest, and my condolences go out to his family as Staff Sergeant Leach passed away in Afghanistan, and he was a gentleman that tended probably 250 funerals of other soldiers to help comfort their families, and now their family needs comforting. Our Berkeley Public Safety Department is second to none. Week and a half ago or so, there was a major fire in the city, and I happened to stop by from a distance and saw them, and during the heat, during the rain, they are just working nonstop, and I just wanted to say how fortunate we are to have them. This past Friday, the 13th, I don't know how many of you know it, but our, our wonderful mayor had a birthday, so not looking any older, looking younger, so happy birthday to the mayor.
Thank you.
And definitely not last, but last but not least, it is a breath of fresh air to look at Leslie Ellis and see her back from delivering her little boy, Aller David, Aller David, which means cheerful, if I'm correct, and Leslie, you've been missed. It's nice to wake up in the morning and see your articles, and thank you for all your good work.
Councilmember Platten.
Nothing this evening.
Mayor Protem Terbrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few Summer Fest events that are coming up this week, actually, this weekend, this weekend, I want to make sure all of our residents are aware of. First, on Thursday, this Thursday, July 19th, from 5:30 to 8:30, we have the J.C. Park Jamboree at J.C. Park. Now, on Thursday, we also have Robina Rhapsody, but they're staggered a little bit, so you can attend both, both events. It'll be a fantastic night. Both events are for your kids, for the families, so please make sure that you mark those down in your calendar. Again, that's this Thursday, and the J.C. Jamboree is from 5:30 to 8:30 at J.C. Park. Coming up on Saturday, this Saturday, the 21st, from 11:00 to 3:00, is our big community picnic. Last year, the first community picnic part of Summer Fest was a fantastic success. All kinds of residents were here, a lot of different community organizations participated, all kinds of activities for kids. There's a dunk tank, I was in the dunk tank last year. Sadly, I won't be in town on Saturday, so I will not be able to go in the dunk tank again, but we have gotten commitments from a number of Dads Club coaches that will be in the dunk tank, so any of you Dads Club players, I'm sure you want to show up and dunk your coach, so make sure that you get there. I can't remember the time that they're in, but it's from 11:00 to 3:00, you'll find them. It's a great day, there will be, there's food, there's going to be some water. Just make sure that we all attend that. And while I'm mentioning the Dads Club, I, I don't recall, but the Dads Club tournament was a few weeks ago now, and I just want to congratulate them again on what a great tournament it was, what a great representation for the city of Berkeley. I mean, there were, it gets bigger and bigger every year, more people this year than in the past, again, and people were happy, our fields were in great shape, the Dads Club had event staff all over the place, there was good baseball being played, and people were happy, but it was just a great weekend for the city of Berkeley. And again, the Dads Club does so much around here, I just want to thank them for all of their hard work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Nothing tonight, dear.
Councilmember Blanchard.
I mentioned at the last meeting, the meeting before, about a tragic accident that happened to a Ferndale police officer. On June 25th, 2012, a minivan occupied by a Ferndale police officer, John Cleveland, his wife Jody, and their three children, Katie, Gavin, and Olivia, was struck by a drunk driver. Tragically, Olivia did not survive the accident, she was only three years old. Additionally, the accident also resulted in Jody and the Cleveland's other two children being hospitalized for several days. This is a tragic accident, and the Ferndale Police Officers Association is putting together a benefit at Rosie O'Grady's on September 20th, if anybody's interested. It's going to be $10 at the door for food and non-alcoholic beverages, and if you want to come, we'd be pleased to help you. Excuse me, my son's a Ferndale officer, so he's got me involved.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few very important items that I'd like to, to discuss and at least give a brief report to the city council. The first deals with the Vincetta parking issue. I know that we've had a lot of concerns brought to us by our residents with regards to that, and what I'd like to do right now is just simply summarize some of the things that we've been doing, and to assure the residents that, that we're doing everything that we can in order to, to address their concerns, and so are the owners of Vincetta Garage. But first, let me just state that, that when we approved this agreement, that this was done in accordance with our law. It does allow us to have a joint parking agreement, and they have an agreement with Charter One. I'm pleased to report that we did require that, that they provide valet parking. This is some, an issue that the city, Berkeley, asked right away, and this was something that unfortunately, they didn't, they weren't able to implement, but, but as, as of last week, they, they now have valet parking, and hopefully that'll help a little. We've asked them, again, to inform the people that attend the restaurant to please park at Charter One, you know, give a little bit more, more insight. They've also agreed to put together a flyer that goes around the, that community area, again, to summarize and let them know what, what they're doing. We had a very brief meeting with the, with the owner, and these are some of the things that, that he said he was going to do. And then also, I know that our public safety department is also very concerned about this, and they've been very diligent in terms of monitoring and addressing any concerns that have been brought to our attention with regards to this issue. So again, if anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to contact my office, I'd be happy to address them. And again, we are working, we're diligent on this issue, and we ask you to, to simply please be patient. I think that this is a wonderful restaurant, and we're hoping that it will, it'll just be another, another restaurant in our city, but I guess when, when you're first starting, it's a brand-new restaurant, there's, there's a lot of people that are wanting to come, and I'm pleased to say that they've had a tremendous response, I think more than what they planned in terms of people coming to this restaurant. So I'm hoping that it'll continue to be successful. However, we have to find a way in where we can both survive. I do also know that the, that the business owners, for a long-term solution, they are looking to also acquire some land. Of course, they're working with our city planner on this issue, and if, and if, if it looks like it's going to be something that they can do, I know that they'll go before the planning commission to finalize everything, and then it'll come to the city council for final. So for the residents out there, please know, we are aware of this issue, we thank you for your calls, and, and we are monitoring the situation carefully. So thank you very much. On another matter, I'd like to make just a brief announcement with regards to some of our staff. I'd like to welcome a new member to my staff. Her name is Darshell Strickland Love. She is the assistant to the city manager. She takes over the position that was left vacant by Teresa McCarleton. However, Teresa hasn't gone too far away. She was promoted to our Parks and Recreation Manager. That is a title that is similar to an Assistant Parks Director, and I know that she's very happy to, to be part of their team out there, and I believe that although she's only been there for three weeks, I'm very confident that she will do an outstanding job as well. And the same thing with, with Ms. Love. She comes to us with a lot of experience, a lot of education, and with the last three weeks, she's had to deal with some tough issues, and, and she's hit the ground running, so I'm very, very pleased with everything that she's, that she's been doing so far. So if you get a chance, I know a few of you out there that have come out to say hello to her. We do plan on sending out some information to, to the press so they can let the people know, and, and hear some new voices. These are not new positions, these are just vacancies, and, and they're, they're being filled, so, so please know that. And then also, I'm hoping that this past weekend, everyone in the city received a, an informational newsletter that we sent out to the public with regards to the proposed millage, and it is, it just happened in terms of the brochure being published, so it's just, it's just being sent right now, and it looks like this. So residents, I'm hoping that you've received this, this informational brochure, and again, it tells you about the, the millage that, that we're going to be asking the voters to consider on Tuesday, August 7th. If you have any questions, you can either call my office, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or you can go to BerkeleyMish.org/millage, and, or just go to our own website at BerkeleyMish.org, and you'll be able to get some more information with regards to the millage, and, and also any questions that, that people have as to how do, how do we get here, and things of that nature. I know that there's a lot of information that the finance director has put together with regards to costs and things of that nature, so please go to this website for more information. And then also, with regard to this, I'd, I'd like to formally inform everyone that we are planning on hosting a, a town, a town hall meeting on Tuesday, July 24th, at 6:30 PM, at the Parks and Recreation Multipurpose Room, and that's located at 2400 Robina. Again, for more information, please go to our website for more details. And then lastly, Your Honor, I'm just going to take a personal privilege on, on this and, and make a comment on, on a few items. First, I too would like to extend my sincere condolences to the Leach family. I had the privilege of sitting next to him and his wife when we thanked them, we had a small dinner for them, and I, after the parade, they were our co-marchals, and I think he, when he came afterwards, he and his wife were so excited and just, just so happy with the response that they got from our residents. I, I think they were walking on air, they were just so happy with all the, the thank yous that they were getting from, from the residents for, for what, for what he was doing. It, it is so sad. So, so again, my sincerest condolences to the, to the family. And then also, I know that Councilwoman Kadeckel mentioned the fire, house fire that we recently had last week as well. Something interesting happened that, that again, it just proves what a great city we have. Chief Ashman and I, after the fire, we went out there to take a look and, and just make sure that everything was okay. I wanted to, to see what the firemen had done, or our public safety officers had done, and again, they did a great job, but I did get to meet with the resident that was there. But the interesting thing that, that I saw was that the neighbors of the neighborhood, they all came together, and one of them said to me, you know, before she goes off, she had to go, I guess stay at a hotel or something, just before they, they left, we made sure that we fed them, we gave them dinner. And I've never heard of anything like that before, where a neighborhood would come together and, and help their neighbors in need. I thought that was tremendous. And, and so when I talked to the neighbor, she said, you know, Jane, I guess what I, the way I felt was, I guess there, for the grace of God, goes I, and I'm hoping that if anything were like that were to happen to my family, that somebody would be out there to help me. So with that, thank you to those people, and thank you to the residents of the city of Berkeley. It just goes to show, again, like I said, what a, what a great community we are. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Suboda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Schneider.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to recognize three young men here in the audience.
Could you guys come up?
They're from the Phoenix chapter of the Order of DeMille. Jason Golick, Josh Blackburn, and Chris Boyer, and they're here, I think, to understand how government works, at least at the local level. Perhaps one of you would tell us in a couple of sentences what your organization does?
Well, our organization is a group for young men ages 12 to 21, and we offer community service and leadership opportunities with the Masons, because we're Masonic-sponsored organization. But, yeah, we work with them, we do community service, and we also do fun things also, like we watch movies, we have dances, and lots of other fun stuff, like video game nights or something. But we're also low on membership, so if you, any of you have sons or grandsons, it's all men, it's an all-men organization, but if you have sons or grandsons, we will be glad to take them in. Our meetings are on the Fridays, the first and third Fridays of the month, and today is, we have seven obligatory days that we honor, and one, today's our government day, so today we observe and honor our government, so thank you, and thank you.
Well, thank you for being here, and I hope you learned something about local government. And fundamentally, local government comes down to your neighbors, sitting down and trying to make decisions for the betterment of the community. And so these are all neighbors, residents of this city, who devote a lot of their time to making sure that our community runs as well as possible. And it gives us great encouragement to see young men like you three coming to learn about this, and maybe you will be sitting in seats like this in a few years' time. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Has been noted already that our colleague, Councilmember Baker, is not with us. He is on business, out of town. Councilmember on business, out of town. Councilmember Baker, characteristically, has a word of wisdom to share, and although he is out of town, he emailed me this evening.
That's right.
This is the message from Councilman Baker.
I know.
"Absence makes the heart grow fonder," which was first written in 1832 by Ms. Strickland as, "Tis absence, however, that makes the heart grow fonder. My best to the council, the administration, and staff, our volunteers, and to the residents and businesses that make Berkeley such a fantastic place to live, work, and play." And that's the word from our colleague, who is out of this state. "There is no better way to end this meeting than on such a lofty thought." Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kadeckel.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadeckel?
Yes.
Platten? Yes. Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Doyle?
Yes. The July 16th meeting of the council has been adjourned.